I would like to call the August 5th, 2014 Longmont City Council Study Session to Order. Could we please start with a roll call?
Mayor Coombs.
Here.
Councilmembers Bagley.
Here.
Christensen.
Here.
Finley.
Present.
Levison.
Here.
Moore.
Here.
Santos.
Here.
Mayor Yuruporn.
Okay, let's stand for our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, I guess I'll kind of toss up here whether we let the kids go first, or I guess we'll just go through probably invited to be heard. So the first person on the list this evening is Nancy Rezak.
Good evening, I'm Nancy Rezak from Visit Longmont, and my address is 512 Fourth Avenue, Suite 103, Longmont, Colorado. And I'm here tonight to introduce you all to Erin Balling. She is our new marketing and sales coordinator for Visit Longmont. She comes to us with over a decade of experience in tourism, hospitality, and marketing. And she was most recently at CSU in Fort Collins as the guest relations coordinator. So what we're here tonight to tell you is that at Visit Longmont, we are crazy about Longmont. And in March of this year, we implemented the Loco campaign. And so as you, the ambassadors for our city, we thought it was really important for you to have some Loco memorabilia. So, we are here tonight to present you with t-shirts and mugs. So we will go through that, and hopefully we'll get it done in three minutes.
Is it under fifty dollars?
Yeah.
By the way, this is the coolest logo.
Yes, it is.
Yeah, it's really nice.
Pick out a medium.
Oh, I want that, even.
You have several.
No, I don't.
And I gave you, and I bought you this shirt.
Large's not working.
Why, you're crazy about seeing a large shirt.
I was making my shirts. I bought three shirts for the council members and Mayor C. David Martin.
Awesome. Okay, I guess next up is Joan Peck. Please come down and state your name and address.
Good evening, I'm sorry to have to do this at such a lovely festive event, but here I am. Good evening, my name's Joan Peck, 1935, Spuce Avenue. On Saturday morning, July 2nd, Councilman Bagley approached my husband and I to say hello as we worked on our float, a parade float. I asked him if council was going to appeal our lawsuit against the fracking ban. His response was that it would be debated at a council meeting, and he thought the vote would be five to two. He would be supporting an appeal, even though he thinks we'll lose. Councilman Bagley went on to say that he hoped Initiative 89 would pass because it would help our regs lawsuit. Imagine my surprise when I saw him onstage next to Governor Hickenlooper and Jared Polis in support of suppressing the voice of the people, pulling Initiatives 88 and 89 from the ballot in support of a task force. Councilman Bagley or Mayor Coombs may say that he was onstage representing the citizens of Longmont along with the 90,000 people who signed the statewide petitions, but in my opinion, he was not. There have been at least three times this year that this council has suppressed the voice of the people and gone against their advice and will. One of them was the access road, public property handed over, not sold, to the oil and gas industry. Another was the recent funding on the mall, a bond which should have gone to a vote because we were handing over public monies. And this last blatant effort to shut down 90,000 voices who demonstrated our constitutional right to petition our government so we can vote on our own health and safety. A task force to study the situation and make decisions in our names, wasn't it also Councilman Bagley who represented us on the task force two years ago? He stated quite clearly that the industry will not compromise, and that they were so adamant in their stance that he felt the need to carry a gun. It's my opinion that the people of Longmont are not interested in task forces. This takes us back two years, not forward. We voted for a charter amendment to ban fracking within the city limits, not regulations, because setbacks in regulations can be changed on a whim by the industry or politicians. The charter amendment has to be changed by a vote of the people. We expect all of you to do your sworn duty and take this to the appellate court and hire if need be. Your concerns about the cost of a lawsuit is a moot point, after selling public buildings with a final price tag of approximately forty-six million dollars to a developer who by their own website admits to never developing anything. Thank you.
James, Jim Kenworthy? James Kenworthy, 107 Caribou Place. For those of you who are here from other countries, I'm going to read a little bit from the Declaration of Independence. "When in the course of human events it becomes necessary for one people to dissolve the political bands which have connected them with another, and to assume among the powers of the earth the separate and equal station to which the laws of nature, and as nature's God, entitle them, a decent respect to the opinions of mankind requires they should declare the causes which shall impel them to the separation. We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal, that they are endowed by their Creator with certain unalienable rights, that among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness; that to secure these rights governments are instituted among men, deriving their just powers from the consent of the governed; that whenever any form of government becomes destructive of desens, it is the right of the people to alter or to abolish it, and to institute new government, laying its foundation on such principles and organizing its powers in such form as to then shall seem most likely to affect their safety and happiness. Prudence indeed will dictate that governments long established should not be changed for light or transient causes. And accordingly, all experience has shown that mankind are more disposed to suffer, while evils are sufferable, than to right themselves by abolishing the forms to which they are accustomed. But when a long train of abuses and usurpations pursuing invariably the same object, capital O, invents a design to reduce them under absolute despotism, capital D, it is their right, it is their duty, to throw off such government." The preamble to the Constitution mentions the general warfare, and these two words are the most often repeated in the Constitution, the general warfare. Amendment 14, "No state shall make any law which shall abridge the privileges or immunities of the citizens of the United States." That's Amendment 14. I'm going to repeat it. "No state shall make any law which will abridge the privileges or immunities of the citizens of the United States." So what's an immunity? Freedom or protection from anything injurious or distasteful. You all took oath to support the Constitution, as did I. We all need to read through the Constitution every now and then just to remind us what it says. It's more important to follow the Constitution than it is to make any deals with the rich and powerful. Thank you. Padma Wick?
Good evening, Mayor Coombs and City Councilmembers. My name is Padma Wick. I live at 4213 Frederick Circle in Longmont. I'm here this evening to remind you of your sworn duty to uphold the Charter of the City of Longmont. You cannot stop your defense of the Charter based on cost. That may be an easy argument for you to sell to the public when so many of us are having to do with less in our personal lives, but it is invalid. In her ruling, Judge Mallard indicated that this issue needs to be taken to a higher court. There will be a cost to that, but it's miniscule in comparison to the money you spent and committed to the construction of yet another mall, a strip mall. You even voted to sell off the public library, the civic center, and the justice center to finance the development of a strip mall with what will be a total of over forty million of taxpayer dollars. What's more important? A strip mall, or to uphold the vote of the people and protect them from the well-known health hazards and loss of property values associated with fracking? What would bring more tax revenue? A strip mall, or a rise in property values, and the relocation to Longmont of profitable, clean businesses, which a fracking ban would do? You cannot circumvent the people's right to vote on fracking by holding public hearings that will bring a tiny segment of Longmont's population perhaps to fill this room, or by setting up a commission which would include a few carefully chosen members of the public. That would be a violation of the public trust. A change to the Charter requires another vote. Why would you be afraid of a vote? Meetings and commissions are no substitute for a vote by the public. They are just a way of usurping the public's democratic right to vote on Charter issues and further violating the public trust. When you denied the public the opportunity to vote a bond in regard to the sale of their buildings, their buildings, the public buildings, you violated a public trust. You made that costly determination on your own. If you back commissions and meetings with tiny numbers of citizens instead of a full citizen vote, and thereby justify not wholeheartedly pursuing further all necessary defense of the Charter, you are violating the public trust. Remember who you serve, the many people of Longmont, not the local arm of multinational corporations. Thank you.
Kay Fizenger?
Kay Fizenger, 2199 Creekside Drive in Longmont. Almost two years ago, in November of 2012, the people of Longmont sent a decisive instruction to their city government that they did not want hydraulic fracturing and the dangers and risks that flow from fracking within Longmont. Nor did they want the disposal of toxic waste produced from fracking in their community. Shortly after that election, I surprised the then-city council that the number of votes cast in favor of the Charter amendment to prohibit this practice was greater than the number of votes cast in the previous election for both then-Mayor Brian Baum and current Mayor Dennis Coombs combined. Shortly after the November 2012 election, several members of the community and the members of our health, our future, our Longmont Steering Committee, and Board of Directors spoke to the council in a public session about our emphatic expectation that the city would vigorously defend our newly passed Charter amendment. That council entertained no doubts about what the community demanded. It promised to do just that, vigorously defend the prohibitions contained in Article 16. Although the oil and gas industry and Governor Hickenlooper won the first round in district court, it is not game over. I suspect that there are some members of this council who want it to be. Remember, however, that you were not given instruction at the ballot box in 2012 to defend the city's Charter just so far and no further. This is Longmont's Constitution. You have taken an oath to defend it, whether or not you want to. The four organizations that constitute the citizen interveners are committed to filing an appeal. The people of Longmont are expecting this council to instruct the city's legal representatives to join with the interveners in filing an appeal. Perhaps as early as next Tuesday, you will cast your individual votes on whether the district's court ruling should be appealed. You are expected to vote yes unanimously. With your vote, you will signal whether you represent the people of Longmont, or whether you too are representing the oil and gas industry, irrespective of excuses or fabricated reasons that might be given. We will all be watching as we were in late 2012. Thank you.
Thank you, Kay. Michael Belmont?
Good evening, council. My name is Michael Belmont. I live at 841 Tenacity Drive. I hope you agree that with me in the matter of whether to appeal the district court's decision to dismiss our case surrounding Article 16 of our Constitution, you have a duty to citizens across the United States who are threatened and bullied by powerful industries and/or oppressive regulations that would assume preemptive power over local choice in matters that directly affect the quality of life and health of community members. You have a duty to the Colorado Constitution, Article 2, Section 3, which reads, quote, "Our persons have certain natural, essential, and unalienable rights, among which may be reckoned the right of protecting property and seeking and obtaining their safety and happiness." You have a duty to every U.S. citizen who ever has, is, or will diligently and sincerely exercise their constitutional right to the democratic process, as did Longmont citizens against staggering odds through the ballot initiative process. And indeed, you have a duty to every one of those 25,000 citizens in this community that voted in good faith to prohibit the dangerous, heavy industrial activity of fracking within our borders, trusting their representatives to vigorously defend this position. In the actual summary judgment of our case, Judge Mallard wrote, "Longmont is," and I quote, "essentially asking this court to establish a public policy that favors protection from health, safety, and environmental risks over the development of mineral resource. Whether public policy should be changed in that manner is a question for a different court," end quote. She is clearly saying that the only way to have a fair trial honoring the people of Longmont in this case is to appeal this case to a higher court. John F. Kennedy once said, "Victory has a hundred fathers, and defeat is an orphan." Would you orphan your constituents in the face of this one small defeat? The list is long of great men and women who accomplished what they did in spite of significant setbacks and defeats. Had they acquiesced to their defeats, we would not enjoy today contributions from the likes of Abraham Lincoln, Helen Keller, Albert Einstein, Oprah Winfrey, Beethoven, Franklin D. Roosevelt. Oh, you can choose to not appeal this decision and assure your place as an insignificant footnote of history. Rather, let us rise now together, joining the ranks of the great and courageous who fought on in the face of temporary defeat, breaking new ground, bringing fresh hope, indeed changing it better before it erupts as we know it. Thank you.
Please, no signs. It's a distraction. Next person is Karen Dyke, please.
My name's Karen Dyke. I live at 1412 White Hall Drive, Number B. I'm here on behalf of my three grandchildren who also live in Longmont. I moved to this beautiful city in March of last year. I felt I was safe from fracking due to the ban. What I now know is that there are wells lined up against Highway 66. What I now know is that there are wells lined up against Highway 66 in Weld County Road 1. That's about a mile from me. What I also realize is that if we lose our ban or if the moratorium in Boulder County goes away, we will have more wells and closer wells. We have suffered from pollution alerts several times recently. This became very real to me, how much pollution there are, there is, when I had to go to the doctor recently for a new chronic cough. Is this from all that nearby fracking? I can't prove it. I just know that my symptoms started when all the drilling started and they haven't gone away. The ozone level here is higher than in Los Angeles, and that is not good for my health, the health of my family, and the health of this community. I won't bore you with a lot of statistics. You've heard them all before. Instead, I want you to hear a poem written by Drew Dillinger. It's 3:23 in the morning, and I'm awake because my great-great-grandchildren won't let me sleep. My great-great-grandchildren ask me in my dreams, "What did you do while the planet was plundered? What did you do when the earth was unraveling? Surely, you did something when the season started failing as the mammals and reptiles and birds were all dying? Did you fill the streets with protests when democracy was stolen? What did you do once you knew?" My question to you is, what will you do to protect the van, ban that was voted in by the citizens of my adopted city? Please support the citizens of Longmont and keep fracking out of Longmont through the ban and regulations. You need to approve that this will move forward to the Court of Appeals. That's where we can be successful, and if not, you need to take it to the Supreme Court because the citizens of Longmont know what you need to do. Thank you.
Shelley Basman. Oh, excuse me, Judith Blackburn. Sorry, is Judith Blackburn here? And she'll be followed by Shelley Basman.
Councilmembers and Mayor Coombs, at this moment, I hardly know what to say because I hardly know what is going on between Hickenlooper and Polis and Bagley and Hickenlooper and Hickenlooper in Longmont. I've heard and read conflicting reports about the timing on these withdrawals and about which Longmont lawsuit is really being negotiated away. Whatever it is that is happening behind the scenes, it does not feel good to me. So I'm going to keep my comments very simple. Like many others here this evening, I want to encourage you to take the appeal forward for our Longmont ban. Even though a judge has ruled against our right to protect ourselves vis-à-vis state preemption, albeit extending our protection by means of a stay, at least temporarily, we do have the right to appeal, and as a city, it is certainly in our best interest to do so. A bit of warning here also, as politicians, it is certainly in your best interest to do, go forward with this appeal because Longmont voters went across party lines and they have a vested interest in this ban. The two statewide ballot initiatives put forward by Coloradans for a safe, clean state were, are, in our best interest as well, in that each would have limited well sites within metropolitan areas and would have strengthened local control when there were differences between state and local regulations. Now they seem to be gone. I think defending our ban is perhaps Colorado's best existing hope for establishing new case law that favors people over corporations. Thank you.
Shelley Basman.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Shelley Basman, and I live at 3414 Lakeview Circle. I don't have anything prepared. So this is a top here. Please appeal the lower court decision. As Michael Belmont said, that judge said, "This is not something I can decide." To decide it on policy, on further information, it needs to be taken to a higher court. It is incumbent upon Longmont to take it to that higher court. When we first became aware of this problem and been learning about it, one of the first people we were able to listen to was Russ Wilson, retired from the EPA. And one of the first comments I remember him saying is, "There needs to be new case law." That the decision, while it was really under old, old technology, had enough of, the rat city council had enough of oil, gas in the city and voted to ban it. They had a lot of wells already. And the Supreme Court said that under the old technology, the 20th century technology, didn't cause that much harm. The new one does. And let me tell you, the new one is not 60 years old. I recently called the COGCC to talk to their environmental person to ask, "Why aren't they correcting this misstatement that this is tried and true for 60 years?" And the person said, "It's not our job to correct individual statements." That in fact, there was a well in 1948. They put water down it and maybe sand. It was not horizontally drilled. It did not have the fracking chemicals. It did not have the volumes. It did not have the impacts. It was not what we're talking about today. There needs to be new case law, and Longmont is particularly situated. I think the judge can say, municipality can say, "No, we don't want this without our borders. Erie ought to be doing this." Or I hope Erie sometimes wakes up and smells the coffee and does say, "We don't want any more wells," which is what really did 40 years ago, 30 years ago. Please appeal the decision I hope to read in tomorrow's newspaper that papers have been filed that Longmont is appealing the decision and bring in the experts. See if they'll volunteer to come. Let's mount a really strong case that this does affect the people in local communities. Thank you.
Joe Basman.
Thank you, Mr. Member, uh, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. I'm Joe Basman, 3414 Lakeview Circle, where I own the surface rights and where I have no choice other than to abide by city of Longmont zoning regulations. I still can't imagine why this situation should be any different for people who own the subsurface rights. And if I did own the subsurface rights, I would guess that Longmont city ordinances would apply to me equally in both ownership territories. Of course, I urge you to appeal the decision of Judge Mallard. I think that 21st century fracking deserves a hearing at a court of law. It's totally different than the fracking that occurred in the 20th century. Basically, 21st century fracking wasn't even invented until George Mitchell discovered it, developed it at the end of the 1990s, and the first fracked well using modern technology didn't occur in Boulder County until this century, late in 2000, late in the 2000s. For this reason, I think that some court will take this case on and appropriately so. The dangers are different. The economics are different. The environment in municipalities is different to the extent that they're being affected by fracking within their midst. Please pursue the case through the court procedures and hopefully we'll find a judge who will listen to the pros and cons and make a determination based on modern times. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Can I take, does anyone, is anyone opposed to me taking a moment? If so, I'll wait till the end. Okay, good. I want, I want to make sure that people are here, and so a lot of times they all leave and then I'm stuck talking to an empty room. But I just wanted, I want to tell a story, okay? I want to tell a story. The story is, how did I wind up on the front page of the paper today? Okay? So I'm literally in my office at 5:00, 5:30 on Sunday, and I get a phone call, okay? And I get a phone call, and I don't recognize the number, and so I let it ring and go to voicemail. It rings again, five minutes later, goes to voicemail, rings again, and I'm just ignoring it. It's my cellphone. I have no idea who this person is. I get a text from our, our dear Mayor Coombs, and that text says, "Congressman Jared Polis is trying to get a hold of you." And I said, "Well, what does he want?" I have never talked to Congressman Polis in my life before Sunday, okay? So I said, "Okay, well, interestingly enough, you want to tell me, Mayor, why he's calling?" He goes, "Well, I promise not to tell you. Just need to call." I said, "All right." So I give him a call. This is about Sunday, I don't know, 7 or 8 o'clock. I said, "Hello." At the time, I couldn't even remember if he was a senator or a congressman. So I just say, "Hi, this is Brian Bagley. I'm returning your phone call." I was a little nervous. He goes, "Oh, Brian, how are you?" I said, "Pretty good. How can I help you?" He says, "What are you doing on Monday?" And I have a successful law firm. I'm a businessman. I said, "Well, that depends. I've got court. I've got clients. It, I'm working. What do you want?" And he said, "Well, the thing is that Governor Hickenlooper and myself, there will be an announcement on Monday at 11:00 that the governor will be asking the COGCC to dismiss the regulations Longmont, uh, the regulations lawsuit against Longmont. Can you be there?" My response, if you've been paying attention for the last two and a half years, was absolutely with bells on, where do I need to go? And so he said, "I have no idea. We don't have a deal yet. We're still working on it, but apparently the deadline was coming up for the signatures." And he says, "I need you to, so if you, if you can go, go because the mayor's out of town." I was not invited because I was in the governor's oil and gas task force. I was not invited because I was a loudmouth. I was invited because I am Mayor Protem, and when the Longmont, or when the Longmont mayor is not available, I go to stuff, which I don't want to go to, but this is what I did, I will admit. And so the next morning, I woke up and I said, "Hello." I called his chief of staff and I said, "Yes, Congressman Polis said that we have a meeting today. Is that still on?" Her exact words were, "I don't know. We don't know. We don't even know where it's going to be. We think it's going to be in the foyer at the Capitol, maybe on the west steps, but we'll keep you posted. Just head down to Denver around 11:00." I hung up, called Harold Dominguez, and I said, "Mr. Dominguez," actually I said, "Harold, why don't you come with me? Because certain people that were going to be in attendance at that press conference, quite frankly, scare me. We don't have a history of getting along very well." So I said, "You want to give me backup?" And Harold chuckled and he says, "Oh, this is going to be good." His exact words were, "I was kind of hoping you'd call because, well, when you get in these kind of situations, things kind of get interesting." And so at that point, we drove down, we get out of the car, we parked, what, 10:30? And I looked at Harold and I said, "Harold, what do you think they're going to say?" And he said, "I have no idea." So I get in there and call Congressman Polis. It's about quarter till 11:00. I said, "Hey, um, so, um, so where is this thing? We're the only people here." He goes, "Oh, well, they decided to push it back." I go, "What?" I said, "Well, is it still happening? Give me a percentage." He goes, "Well, we're about 80% sure this is going to go through, but we haven't heard anything from the governor's office." And I said, "All right, well, what's the holdup?" Exact words. "Well, apparently, when they found out it was you, they weren't too excited with going through with it." Now, at the time, I didn't know what they were going to do, but having Brian Bagley who called this oil and gas task force present behind his back, I called it a joke before, he was kind of, he was kind of a little nervous. So I chuckled, I said, "I'll be on my best behavior, tell him it's not going to be a problem." And am I, am I exaggerating at all at this point, Harold? And I said, "Okay, well, call me back. I'm here. I'll do whatever they want me to do. And speaking or not, just, just let me know. We're here." Called me back about, we went to Subway, called us up, and they said, "Well, it's on for 11:30. Please come on over." We get there, we're standing there, somebody from the governor's office came out and said, "Go into the little room." I went in the little room, and it was the governor, Jared Polis, myself, the other people that were going to be present, and they said, "We are going, we have reached a deal, and apparently we are going to call upon both sides. Two ballot measures for pro-industry, two ballot measures over here for the environmentalists, and everybody," I mean, he didn't say the word, but being married to a Mexican wife, we would call it a Mexican standoff, "and they said, "We're just going to lower our weapons, and as an act of good faith, we will be dismissing the Longmont lawsuit as far as it pertains to the regulations." And at that point, I said, "You're going to say this on camera to everybody?" He said, "Yeah, we're going to do that." I said, "Sweet, thank you." And at that point, I said, "Holy, holy crap, I don't have anything to say." So I sat down very quickly before we went out, jotted down my comments, went out and stood behind the governor. He starts talking. About two minutes in, I thought, "I'm not paying attention. What happens if he says something that's like really detrimental to our city? I better start paying attention." So after he spoke, then the congressman spoke, then a woman in camera spoke, and at that point, I took the podium and simply said, "Thank you for dismissing the lawsuit. That's it." I mean, I said a little bit more, but that was essentially the, the message I gave. That was the extent of this backroom dealmaking. A phone call to the mayor, a phone call to me, and that was it. Now, I want to address just for a second, I mean, the irony here is that I really liked the group that just spoke. At no time have I ever hesitated to allow any one of you to take up my workday to come in and talk about the fracking issue. I've always been open and honest with my thoughts, with what's going on, all kinds of stuff. And I'm a little frustrated because, I mean, when I talk to you folks, you know, I don't ever say, "Well, it's off the record," but, I mean, just, just for a moment, what's it going to look like now, Ms. Peck, if I vote for the, for the appeal and now you've put it on public record that I don't think we'll win? I mean, how, how is that helping our city? You know, so when I talk to you folks and I'm sharing information and then coming to a public forum and making this public, that doesn't help us at all. And so, you're right, I shouldn't have said it. And so from now on, I'm going to think twice before talking with any of you. You know, because what's going to happen is it's going to take the podium, and now I'm sitting here thinking, "Okay, well, how do I vote?" You know, I'm kind of in a, between a rock and a hard place now. I vote for the appeal. I'm the guy that doesn't think we're going to win or we're wasting the court's time, and if I vote against it, you guys are going to crucify me on the 26th. So I don't know what I'm going to do. But I just wanted you to know what happened this past week so there was no misunderstandings and we could get on with that. And so nobody's thinking that even on council that I was making some backroom deal. But that came at a request of my mayor, and I went down. So thank you.
I just like to add to that, you know, I was out of town visiting my daughter in Las Vegas when this, got a phone call from Jared Polis on Sunday afternoon, and, you know, had Brian not been available, I would have jumped on an early morning plane. I would have flown back here and done, but fortunately, you know, I felt very comfortable with Brian being able to represent our city in a very proper way. We are, on council, that work really, really hard on our regs lawsuit. We're really proud of that legislation. It is pretty good. It's essentially pretty darn close. It's not a total fracking ban, but if you really understood and looked at the map, it pretty much bans fracking except for about three quarters of a square mile or something like that, a very small percentage that's on the edge. It probably doesn't have any gas and oil anyway. So it's always been, I've always thought, our insurance policy that protects our citizens, and to win this, this is huge for us and for our legal team, for our legal team to win this outside of court, because the reason why they caved on this is because they know that we had the facts, that we had the winning hand. And I'm really proud of our legal team for drafting those regs. I'm really proud of our regs, and I was really proud of the job Brian Bagley did for our city in my absence. So thank you, Brian.
Thank you, Mayor.
So anyway, now it's time for, yeah, Sister Cities. Do you want to introduce the next item, Don?
Sure, Mayor. I believe Sam Safi, President of Sister Cities, will introduce the ambassadors and chaperones of this year.
Yeah. Yeah. Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor Protem, members of the council, Ms. Lilia, member of the council of Guzman. I'm glad our youth are here tonight to learn how the, our system works and how our government works. And more importantly, our guests from other countries are here to see firsthand how our system works. So thank you for the opportunity. Mr. Mayor, our chaperones are here, our chaperones and our guests are here. We have roughly 40 people, and they would like to take a picture with you, if you don't mind, and we'll take very, very short, we'll get as short as possible. Thank you. Can't we all send those?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Most of you have noticed we have eight members of kind of a council this evening. We have a council member, Lilia Diaz, from Ciudad Guzman. When I traveled to Guzman several years ago, almost five years or six years ago with my, uh, ago with, uh, Mayor Roger Lang, uh, Mayor Lang and I sat with the 16 member, uh, 16 members of the Ciudad Guzman council, um, with them. So when, um, was it last year? When, uh, um, el presidente, um, José Luis Orozco, um, Lilia and, uh, Nacho del Toro were here, they sat with us at this presentation. Since Lilia was here, I, uh, the mayor and, uh, Mayor Protem Bagley, uh, asked Lilia to sit with us, so just wanted to, again, as you've recognized her, I'd also like to recognize her again, so, welcome. I think she does want to say a few words, so there's a button.
Thank you very much.
Uh, Brian's going to translate.
Sorry.
So do, why don't you go to Sam's spot? You can translate.
Okay.
Buenas noches, mi nombre es Lilia de Jesús Delgado Díaz, regidor en Ciudad Guzmán, Jalisco.
Uh, good evening, uh, my name is Lilia.
Delgado Díaz.
Okay, I'm, I'm a city councilman from the ci, uh, from, uh, Ciudad Guzmán.
Saludo con afecto y con respeto a las autoridades de Longmont Colorado y a todos los integrantes de el presidio que aquí nos acompaña.
Um, I give you a very, uh, heart, uh, a very warm heartfelt greeting to all the officials as well as everyone here.
Quiero agradecer en nombre del licenciado José Luis Orozco Sánchez Alana.
I want to thank you all on behalf of our, our mayor.
El presidente municipal de Ciudad Guzmán.
The mayor of Ciudad Guzmán.
La oportunidad que se me dan.
The opportunity that I've been given.
De participar en esta sesión.
Participate in this session.
Derras gracias.
To give thanks.
La oportunidad que se le da a nuestros embajadores.
And to give thanks for the opportunity that you all have given to our ambassadors.
De ampliar sus horizontes.
In order to, to grow or amplify their what? Que, que es la palabra única?
Horizontes, conocimientos.
Uh, their, their, their knowledge.
Asimismo, a todas las familias que hicieron posible la recepción de nuestros embajadores.
And also to thank all the families that made it possible to receive all our ambassadors.
Muchísimas gracias y los esperamos con los brazos abiertos en Ciudad Guzmán.
Thank you very much and we will wait you in Ciudad Guzmán with open arms. I only screwed up one, one word, una palabra nada más, no super.
Thank you.
Take your time.
Uh, may I invite them over?
Yeah. Please come forward. One row at a time, as quiet.
Project update, moving to serious business.
Why don't we, let's take a five minute break while the kids leave and then we'll start that, alright?
Okay, sounds good.
Alright, thank you.
Uh-oh.
Damn.
Wait.
Want to reintroduce the item, please?
You bet. Next we have a presentation about the St. Brain Creek Improvement Project update. Dale Radamaker, Director of Public Works and Natural Resources, here to present.
Mayor Combs and members accounts on Dale Radamaker, Director of Public Works and Natural Resources. Tonight, we're going to give you sort of a broad update on several facets of what we're calling the St. Brain Creek Improvement Project. The team of folks that are going to present that information to you and hopefully have a dialogue with you, includes Nick Wolfram, who is our Engineering Services Manager, Kim Sugar, who's our Natural Resources Manager, Ken Houston, who's our Water Resources Administrator, and Brad Scholes, Special Projects, out of the City Manager's Office. And so we've got a whole team of folks that are going to talk to you about a whole range of different aspects of this project. So, on the agenda, we're going to, a brief overview of what we're trying to do. Going to update you a little bit on some of the emergency work that's been previously completed. We're going to talk about the St. Brain Watershed Master Plan, where I'm just going to show you a brief video that Boulder County has put together on that. Going to give you an update on the Hundred Year Flood Control Project, Nick Wolfram's going to do that. And it's going to talk about the planning and funding strategies on that. Brad and the team from MIG are going to give you an update on Blueprint Longmont and how those two come together. How the channel project and the MIG work are being sort of woven together. And then, we'll give you an update from Kim on the restoration of the St. Brain and Left Hand Creek Greenways in Catamomo Park. Make sure I have Kim probably go ahead of the Blueprint Longmont, so it will be a little bit out of this order. So, basically, our goal is to not let this happen again. And, and it is a huge goal, and it is a huge undertaking for our community and one that's going to take many years for us to complete. And we will have, I predict, many trials and tribulations as we go through it. The council, we will absolutely and desperately need your leadership and guidance on getting successfully through this project as a staff. Our job is to bring forward to you the best recommendations and options that we can, that achieve this goal as rapidly as we can, but yet as efficiently as we can, spending the money as wisely as we can. Those are all big tasks that we've got to achieve, otherwise I think, otherwise we will not achieve it. We would fail. And so, I just want to just briefly, and I don't want to spend a lot of time on it, but, you know, over the, over the last few months, since September of 2013, we've been on a, sort of, sort of that cage, running very quickly around it and spinning. And sometimes you feel like you're running fast and you're not making any progress. But the reality is, if you step back and think about what you've done and what you've accomplished, it's not so bad. The reality is, is that our biggest challenge for 2014 was to meet the spring runoff. You guys will remember, we had neighborhood meetings because people were traumatized by the flood. They were very concerned about what could happen to them. And of course, on top of that, Mother Nature threw at us one of the largest snow packs that we've had, just to make it interesting. And we had a damaged channel that we knew could not carry, not only could it not carry what it had before the flood, but it certainly couldn't carry any sort of large event again. Fortunately, as you know, it worked out. And I think we're, we're not through the woods yet, though, you know, even though we've made it through runoff. I still believe, as evidenced obviously by things like the Thompson Flood in July of, July 31st, back in 76, as well as our September Flood, those flood occurrences happen outside of the runoff period. And that's what we were telling folks all the way through, even though runoff is a dangerous time. It's, you're not out of the woods. You're really not out of the woods until you get into the snow season. Until you get into the November-December timeframe where that precip comes down at snow, right? That's when you're out of the risk of a flash thunderstorm or a flash flood of that nature. And so, on the west side of town, we're going to keep up the flood, flood barrier on Airport Road. We are working right now on the Golden Channel, is what we're calling it, because it's on Reggie Golden's property west of the city. So the city and the county and the Goldens are working together on that channel project. We are scheduled to go to Boulder County for our limited use site review permitting. We're also having to get floodplain permits. Good news is, city and county are working together very well on it. We will be bringing forward to you over the next 30 days, a series of agreements and IDAs between the city and the county to effectuate that project. Our goal is to build it this fall. And so again, I, I believe our commitment should be to the people on the west side of Longmont, that we keep those barriers up until we have constructed, or at least under construction, certainty, a project that will prevent it from coming back at them. So I'm not going to give you a whole lot more detail on that particular project tonight, because we'll do that when we bring back those agreements for you to execute. Just wanted to let you know that that's moving along well. It has turned into, it's about a half million dollar project. And so we're searching for funding from CDVG and other sources to help pay for that. We have also found out in the area the Creeple's Mouse. And so that throws another challenge at us. It's sort of been one challenge after another. I actually get sort of excited about that, because otherwise life gets boring if you're just able to go out and dig up the dirt and do things. So, you know, we're going to be working around that. That's not a deal killer. What that means is that you have to take precautions, you've got to be careful about what you do so as to not disturb the habitat any more than you absolutely need to, and that you need to be committed to restoring it. And I think that's always been our commitment. And so, I think we can, we'll make that happen. But it, but again, it's, it's the kind of thing that's probably going to take some consultation with the official Wildlife Service to make sure that we're, we're square with them. I would have preferred to not have a mouse, I mean, to just be honest, I'd prefer to be able to, to do it without it. But, you know, we have what we have. And so the, the other debris projects, so we've removed the debris out of the river, some of the gravel around the bridges. The channel actually performed quite well during runoff, even though we got up to about 1,400 CFS, which was the second highest one, except for 1,995. And so, it, it did well. We had a few tense moments, but it wasn't, wasn't the kind of thing that we were overly concerned. We actually got just as concerned probably in the last week or so, when we were getting the, the reports of another four inches of rain. Hell, it was a little jittery when the National Weather Service predicts four inches, because you know, it could turn into 16 if you don't know it, right? So, but again, it, I don't think you're out of the woods again until you get into that snow season. And so I think we have to stay vigilant, we have to stay deliberate, to get these protection projects built. And so, with that overview, the biggest project, oh, actually, I should give you just a real brief on Left Hand Creek. If you drive down Left Hand Creek, down Missouri Avenue now, you'll see a lot of work going on. That's the restoration project. It's about a three and a half million dollar project to put the channel back, because it's an engineered channel, put it back to the way it was, pre-flood. And so, that works underway. That should be completed later this fall. So, the Southmore Park area folks will be back to where they were, pre, pre-flood by the end of this year. And I think that work is progressing well. The other good news for Southmore Park is, the letter should be going out to those residents soon, if not already, notifying them that, that their property is now no longer in the floodplain, so that they will save on their flood insurance. Which again, will be another huge benefit to all these properties along the St. Brain, albeit, once we complete the project, but still, nonetheless, it's a huge benefit for folks. And so, with that, I want to turn it over to Nick. Actually, I'm not going to turn it over to Nick. I'm going to show you a video on the St. Brain Master Plan. That is a master planning process that's looking at the St. Brain from its confluence out east of town with Boulder Creek, out near Highway 119, all the way to the Continental Divide, okay? And so Longmont is a key player in that. Ken Houston and Brad Scholes are the two staff members that we have on our team on that particular project. And suffice it to say, the work that the city is doing through, through the core of the city, is intended to overlay into that bigger project, okay? And so our goal and desire is to match up on our, on each end. So that what we're doing complements, works in well with what's going on on the channel east and west of us. But, you know, the city is probably doing the most intensive work on the St. Brain or planning to do that. And so the work that's going to be going on outside the city is going to be of a different nature than the intense channel work that's going to be going on through the city. So with that, I'll show this quick video, just so you can get a sense of what that process is. He spent the last several months working in the creeks due to this, because he played in runoff. He accomplished a great deal, and now it's time to turn our attention to focusing on the creek, natural recovery.
One of the greatest accomplishments of Creek Planning Initiative is the umbrella effort to coordinate, facilitate, and address long-term creek recovery.
Yeah, the master plan is moving and focusing on identifying the values that are important to our community on a basis-by-basis level.
We're starting by looking at what, what is different now of the stream characteristics from before the flood. This was a very unique event, in that it drastically changed the landscape.
And now it's time to take a look now at the current condition of the creeks now, that a lot of the debris has been removed, that we've segwayed some of the banks, and that we understand some basics about how the creeks are now functioning in this post-flood environment.
So, in terms of disaster, we have property owners' constituents, as well as ditch conveyance constituents, and the flood has been so difficult to deal. So for property owners, the master plan will be available to help them better rebuild in a way that's long-term resilient. But the master plan will allow the ditch conveying to have a full control of our rebuilding process, ensure that that irrigation and pressure stays intact long-term.
We have a lot of moving parts that are going on, and through the creek plans, we hope that we can take a look at all those moving parts as they relate to one another and identify some real steps forward. It's really important that everybody's involved, so that we're making decisions collectively, that we're all hearing the same information from the experts.
We're all in this together. What you do on your property affects people above you and affects people below you. So, it's really important that we all come together, come informed, so we can decide the best course of action for the future of the creeks.
We're looking at a long-term vision, and that has to include all people that live and work and play in this environment.
These master plans are only going to be successful if we have the active involvement of residents throughout the county.
Nobody knows better what happened during the flood, what's happening out there today, and also what they want to see happen in the future for this watershed.
I think one of the big things that I've learned over the course of our recovery efforts in Jamestown is that it's not about individual rights or individual pieces of the stream corridor. It's about treating the stream corridor as a system and recognizing that, that everybody in that system needs to be involved and make the decisions about what we're going to do.
If residents want to get involved, the first step is to go to the website, www.boldercountycreekplan.org, for more information about the context and the risks that we face. Residents can also contact us by phone or by email to get more information.
And with your involvement, we can restore the creek and make it more resilient for the next flood季节.
So again, that was just intended to give both the public at home, as well as the council here, an idea of that larger planning effort that's going on. And again, it's higher level. It's much higher level than what we're going to be talking to you about, the channel through the city. Because really, the draft of that plan's going to be coming out in August, and they're trying to wrap it up this fall. So it's a very quick process, and it's really intended to sort of highlight nodes of areas where future work probably needs to happen. It's not going to do the design, it's not going to do the detailed kind of work of where we're heading within the city. So, you know, we're, we are in the middle of that, obviously for a lot of reasons. I mean, we have infrastructure that goes all the way up to Ralph Price Reservoir and above that. And so Longmont has a key role to play in that. And I think Ken and Brad are doing a good job of representing the city and our particular interests, sort of in a collaborative way with the other, the other partners around the table. So, if you have any questions, Ken and Brad can answer those. Otherwise, we'll move to the next section of tonight's presentation. Okay. And you will, we will be bringing that draft plan to the council, so stay tuned. To a show in the near future, we'll be coming and talking to you. That's. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Nick Wolfram and let him start to take you through a little bit of the details on the, on the channel itself.
Thank you. Good evening. Nick Wolfram with the, Nick Wolfram, Engineering Services Manager for Public Works and Natural Resources. I think many of you have seen this, but looking at the numbers on St. Brain Creek, before the flood, we had a, we had a channel that would carry about 5,000 cubic feet per second of flow through the city of Longmont. After that, after the flood, that was down to about 2,500 CFS because of the amount of debris that came downstream with that. I would say right now, we're probably up into the neighborhood of about 3,500 to maybe even 4,000 CFS because of the work we've done, debris removal, both timber debris, concrete trail sections, and gravel debris in, in certain areas. And that's been a lot of work that's going on. A lot of it hasn't been visible to the community, but there has been a lot of ongoing work as we've been trying to get that ready. And, and that was one of those reasons why we were able to get through spring runoff as well as we could. During the flood, we had about 18,000 cubic feet, and that's on the kind of the upstream. That's above Left Hand Creek, the conveyance of Left Hand Creek that came through the community. It was much higher than that, below that area. The Hundred Year Storm, and we've talked about this many times, was, is 10,000. Was, is currently, the FEMA regulatory flows is 10,000 CFS. As part of their highway reconstruction effort, CDOT, and you saw in that video a portion of Highway 36 that was destroyed. And, and as they've been working on rebuilding their infrastructure up and down the Front Range, they've been working on updates, the hydrologic evaluations of several creeks. Left Hand Creek, St. Verane Creek, Big Thompson, I think they're doing also, and I think they're doing Boulder Creek, too. And, and they've done, the initial draft of the, of their report on St. Brain Creek has come out. And it's been completed down to Lyons, down through Lyons. It'll be another three to six months before they get that draft report, the rest of the way, which they'll be taking out to I-25 through Longmont. The draft report has shown that at Lyons, they're showing an increase in the Hundred Year Storm flows of about 34%. Some of you may remember when we undertook Left Hand Creek project originally, and the first thing we did was redid the model. And we discovered in those older models that there were some errors in those, and that floodplain was bigger. When we originally looked at St. Verane Creek, we said, oh, the floodplain's larger. And so this is just an update of that, and we've spoken with some of the consultants that are working on this and reviewed, have reviewed this work and believe it to be good work. And, and we acknowledge this is occurring. So right now, what we're doing is looking at that 34% and assuming that that is going to translate down to Longmont. So that, that takes that 10,000 CFS design number that we were talking about, and quite simply moves that up to about 13,400 CFS. And, and that is what we believe is the right design to continue to move forward with. As I think Dale said in one of our meetings, we don't want to be having the Grand Ribbon cutting down at the Main Street Bridge and introducing our new 70.5-year design flow bridge, that that's going to happen. It, it will probably be several years before FEMA takes this and updates all of their mapping and works through that process before you see that, but I believe that will happen. That would also take that floodplain that we've shown you before at 10,000 CFS through Longmont, and make it a larger floodplain. So more property yet is going to be impacted by those, by that Hundred Year floodplain. So, we've, we've, actually, we were already under work on the design of the St. Brain Bridge, and, and stopped our consultant, and, and upped that design flow, and have been working through it. And this is now the number that we're using. We'll continue to, to watch through that process as it happens, but, but we're confident that this is the right, the right process, the right design number to go through and use. So as we've done that, we actually updated, I know at your retreat at the Callahan House, we went through and showed you some of the work that we'd had CH2M Hill do on a conceptual level of that drawing. And we've actually now had them update that to that 13,400 CFS. And we've updated our cost estimates along with those. And these are on a very conceptual level, but, but we're looking at a preliminary estimate to take this project, carry the Hundred Year Storm from, from Airport Road down under Martin Street out to wastewater treatment. Street out to wastewater treatment plant at about $80 million to $90 million. Huge, a huge project. We have some of that already funded and that we have some of these bridges already funded. Our CIP currently has the Main Street Highway 287 Bridge funded and as well as the South Parkway Bridge. We've also worked with Boulder County, continuing to do that. And through the flood recovery money through Federal Highway Administration are funding the Sunset Street Bridge. And that project, design project is now getting started. And so, those three bridges are being designed at that Hundred Year Flow. And that's about eight and a half million dollars of that. Our voters approved the Storm Drainage Bond during the primary election rather handily, about close to 70%. And there's $20 million there. Future street revenues, I believe next week on second reading, you'll be voting on whether to put the extension of the street fund sales tax out onto the ballot that it currently expires in December of '16, out on the ballot in November for an extension. And we would be looking at a portion of those revenues to be used for Boston Street Bridge, Hoover Street Bridge, some of the pedestrian bridges along through there. So that's in there. And we have about $7 million of those future funds identified for that. Open space and water funds, because some of this is flood recovery money, some of those are the funds that own some of the property and therefore would be paying the matching funds, 1.6 million. Conservation Trust Fund at $500,000 for some of the trail reconstruction. And then FEMA, the alternate project and FEMA Flood Repair Funds at about $22 million. And I'm not sure how familiar, if council's been talked to, about the alternate project. What we've done on that, that's a relatively new thing. We're the first community actually to have gone through a project this large on that. And what FEMA looks at is, we looked at the areas of Isaac Walton Pond, Dickens Pond, Dickens Park, the ponds north of Harvest Junction, and Sandstone. And we looked at those and said, what would it cost to bring these back to pre-flood condition? And that dollar figure comes up at about $29 million, am I right, Kim? About $29 million. What they then do is say, we'll give you that $29 million and you can do alternate projects with it. We don't necessarily spend all that to bring those back to pre-flood conditions, but would be able to use that money, portions of that money, for the rest of this channel work. We're looking at the same sort of process up at Ralph Price Reservoir where we have all the aggregate debris in there that's eaten up a substantial amount of storage capacity. They're going to pay us for that and we can then invest that money in other storage capacity rather than trying to remove that rock from that reservoir, which would be an almost impossible job.
So what the alternate procedure really does in this case is that through the normal FEMA process, you can't go for the FEMA dollars for mitigation projects because this is about recovery. Under the alternate procedure process, what it allows you to do is you make the decision in terms of what you want to fund. And then with any money that you haven't utilized for that particular project, you then can shift the funds to any eligible FEMA expense, which then brings in the mitigation and the resiliency that you can't do in the normal process. So it allows you to shift that funding into the larger river project. And so, that's really the basis for this, is that it actually expands the categories that you can utilize to spend down the rest of the money.
These are some new regulations that came out of actually Sandy. And as they've told us, this is the largest one of these that they've ever done here in Longmont.
I get the alternate project, moving money. I get that piece. But isn't storage at Ralph Price eventually going to be an issue? So, later, I mean, I understand that getting the infrastructure projects going first is key, but later on, in the future, storage at Ralph Price is going to be an issue.
So Mayor Holmes and Councilmember Santos, at Ralph Price Reservoir, the 5.2 million, I think, that we're looking at in this alternative procedures money, that was the dollar amount that it would otherwise have caused to remove the granular, the gravel debris that's in the inlet of the reservoir that came down the channel of the North St. Brain. It is displacing around 250 acre feet of storage space out of Ralph Price Reservoir, which as you know, is about a 16,000 acre foot reservoir. So it's a relatively small amount of storage that's being displaced out of the reservoir itself. And so, and the removal of that is incredibly expensive because you, you know, to get equipment up there and to try to move that out and get it out of the site. And so, our strategy is to take that money, the 5.2 million dollars, and reinvest in an alternative water supply project. That could be Windy Gap, that could be Union Reservoir. And again, we'll bring that back to the council for you guys to make that ultimate decision. We think we can take 250 acre feet of storage being displaced and turn that into many more acre feet of water storage for Longmont citizens. So we think we can get more water for the buck, if you will.
I just wanted to be clear.
And also, in the alternate procedures, there's three. There's Ralph Price, there's Kanamoto, and then there's the Sandstone/River. Alternate procedure for Ralph Price is going to focus on water supply. Kanamoto's obviously going to focus on the park. The Sandstone/River is where you actually see the 22 million in the movement. It's not movement in all of the procedures into the river project. So I wanted to be very clear on that because now we're also looking at potentially at consult, because there's another mechanism that you can use through FEMA and that's a consolidation of the alternate procedures and specifically what we're looking at is Kanamoto. Because there's the distinct possibility that we're going to need more money and out of the 29 on this other project, it gives us some flexibility versus having to go to the general fund for it and doesn't have a significant impact on the river project.
Okay, I just wanted to be clear about, especially with the water storage, that we can use this for Windy Gap because there has been some public outcry about Windy Gap. I just don't want, I wanted to be clear that we can, that this money can be used for that project. So it's not like we're trying, hey, look over here, we're using money. We're not doing a switcheroo here. I just wanted it to be clear.
It's a water, it's a water for water and it's about a four to one ratio.
Right. I just wanted it to be clear.
But it always makes sense to go after the low-hanging fruit, so I applaud you for doing that. I mean, that makes financial sense to me, so thank you.
Yeah, I think the everything is, even though the gravel's still up there, you know, 20 years from now, 30 years from now, gravel's worth, you know, $1,000 a ton. Maybe the city will go up and mine it. I mean, we might be able to, we have our own little gravel mine that's still sitting there. It ain't going anywhere, so.
I want to back up to that funded bridges too and let you know, of that eight and a half million dollars there, 3 million of that is a grant that we've already received or we're in the process of receiving and it'll be coming to you sometime, probably the next month, for the approval of the contract. Next week? Oh, it is going to be next week. I thought that got moved out. For a grant with FEMA, which we received for a mitigation, an infrastructure mitigation grant, which we received from them.
That was a pre-flood grant. That was a grant that was in process before the flood.
But that's, you know, we're going to continue to look at that. So, you go down to the bottom, we've got about 59.6 million, that leaves us a deficit. Current funding gap of about 20.4 to 30.4 million dollars. And as we've said before, we're looking at a variety of things. We've been working, spending a lot of time over the last several weeks, working on CDBD-GDR funding. Army Corps of Engineers, we've talked to them and are applying for some funding through them. And we'll be continuing to speak with FEMA about additional grants. We've been fairly successful with FEMA in the past and are going to be looking at those as ways to do that. But even with that 34% increase in flows, the cost of the channel has not gone up proportionately and that funding gap is pretty close to the same thing that we reported to you earlier. So, as we look at that, a preliminary plan on how to attack that would be, is shown on this map and looks at different reaches. And this is a very preliminary breakdown based on our conceptual design. We're not going to build all of this at one time. We're going to have to break this down in phases. We can't shut all the bridges down at the same time and we'd be the same way as we were during the flood, which was a nightmare. But we've broken these down with reaches between Martin and Main, Main to Boston, Boston to Hoover, and Hoover out and showed how those could occur in sequence as it goes up there, most likely starting with that downstream and moving up. I will say, this is very preliminary. And as we look at how those funding, how that funding is, where grants might apply to certain areas better than others, we're going to have to be very flexible in how we look at this and how we would move through that. And that will be part of what we continue to look at on this project. It's a very complicated project. I would also state that the funds that we've got, that we've identified here are to build that flood channel and to get our greenway as it exists right now back in shape. Brad's going to be talking a little later about St. Brain Blueprint. And those numbers do not include those enhancement costs in there. That's something else we'd have to look at as we move along. Those numbers do or do not include, these numbers are based on a flood channel and repairing our greenway within that channel and doing that. What we're going to look at is some of the different alternatives for enhancement and economic development that exist. Those numbers do not include that. But I'll come back once again and say, these are very conceptual level numbers. We're getting ready to go out probably as early as next week with an RFP for the initial design of taking that conceptual level channel from concept level to preliminary level and doing a preliminary design of the entire river and then starting on actual construction drawing design for the first phases of that as it goes along.
Let me just say one thing also about, you know, the beauty of having the MIG work being done concurrently with this channel will allow us to look for those kinds of opportunities to fund things more creatively than we probably would have otherwise been able to do if we didn't have that. And so, even though these numbers don't formally include that, I think in conversations with private property owners and having, again, having that information at our disposal will allow us and inform us better as we're moving through the design. And so, whereas we may not be able to build every element that's in the blueprint Longmont thing upfront, we will be able to build the channel in a way so as to accommodate it over time as redevelopment occurs and as opportunities come forward, so we don't lose, we don't lose that opportunity.
I think I would also add, when you look at the numbers and you look at how they're broken out by this project and then you look at the difference that could potentially occur with Blueprint and Longmont, one of the things that I think we really have to bring attention to is the complexity of the funding situation. When you look at the different sources of dollars that will be coming into this project and you look at the different regulations associated with each of those funding sources, it's really imperative that we do break it up by reach because frankly, there's certain points where we're not going to want to mix funding sources because of the different regulations that it brings in. For example, the FEMA dollars don't trigger Davis Bacon. The CDBG dollars do trigger Davis Bacon. And you have those kind of nuances in all the funding sources. And so, when you look at this project and how you're going to utilize those funds, it's important that you do break it up so that when you're presenting this to the potential funders in terms of grants, that they see that it actually is for mitigation and resiliency and flood control. And then you can break out the other amenities where you have to look for more local funding. But the deeper, the deeper we get into this, the more specific we're going to have to be, especially as we begin working on the various reaches and we start bringing those different funding sources in. Because if we're not on top of it, we can trigger some things that may cost us some money in the long run. I will tell you that I think our staff has been a brilliant job in staying on top of those details, but it's going to be something we're going to have to deal with for the entire, through the entire process.
And if you haven't quite gathered yet, it's a pretty complicated project. And it involves a lot of people. And in your council communication, staff has been spending a lot of time today talking about how do we go about managing a project like this. And it's going to be a project that's going to involve a lot of different staff members, a lot of different people within this organization and outside of this organization. The primary key, and I think we outlined this in your communication, is we're looking at a steering committee who would primarily be focused with some of the key staff from Public Works and Natural Resources and External Services. You know, the engineering, the natural resources people, environmental services, our water people, planning and development services, a lot of those different areas, recreation and definitely finance, a lot of those people are involved. We will have a Public Works and Natural Resources Project Manager or multiple ones working on different things, but they'll have, we'll have this steering committee that we envision that will oversee that. They're going to work with a lot of subject matter experts from various departments, whether it's our drainage people, environmental people, planning staff, transportation people, our structural people as it relates to bridges. A lot of different subject matter experts will come in and out. There's going to be a lot of outside agencies. We've talked about Army Corps of Engineers, State Wildlife will definitely be involved in permitting a lot of this stuff. FEMA, CDBG, all those funding sources that we have. Adjacent property owners, we will be needing as we widen this channel to acquire additional property. And we're going to have to be working with those property owners as well as, as you're going to see more from Brad, the opportunities that exist if you take large portions of this area out of the floodplain for redevelopment, how that may benefit some of those property owners. And the general community, as always, we have projects that involve our community. And as we started talking about that, actually, it was John Clark that actually in one of these large meetings said, do you have any idea how much public involvement we already have done? We have literally thousands of hours of public community involvement that have existed because all of these different projects come into play, whether you're talking about St. Brain Blueprint that Brad's talking about, the First and Main Station area, then they had a great deal of that, Dickens Farm Master Park, the Parks and Recreation Trails Master Plan. All of these things will feed into this project and have had that. So we anticipate being able to take a lot of these things. Some of them have some conflicting areas that we're going to have to work through. And I know Kim's been kind of researching a lot of that right now to try and see how do these different things fit together. And some of those will be some decisions we'll have to make. But we're going to start with that, that has a lot of this community involvement already in there, and use that to develop that preliminary design that would then, can be brought forth to the community for further discussion as we move forward. With that, I was going to take a look at a few of the, these are some of the conceptual design work that CH2M Hill has done for us. This is the section of the river north of, downstream of Main Street between Main and Martin. You're looking at what used to be those ponds now and the river has chosen to go through some of those ponds. And one of the reasons we're looking at this section is looking at where that channel, where we're anticipating that channel going through there. This is one of those areas where we, at least at this point in time, we envisioned leaving that river in its new alignment to a large degree. We're going to have to certainly make that work, but we're not going to try and push that all the way back down where it was. We believe the best alternative will be to leave that through there. And Kim and her staff have been working with that as it relates to the design of Dickens Park and how that can have some true advantages and opportunities in that area. You'll see it is a much wider channel to carry those flows. This is coming up upstream to Main Street. So you see Main Street kind of going diagonally through there. And you'll notice on the, on what would be the left side of that screen, you can see the kind of the broad band of contour lines that represent a sloped back section. And all of a sudden, that gets very narrow because in areas there, we're looking at having to use vertical elements, walls, retaining walls, some different things. And some of the choices there are going to be ones of how do we impact those adjacent properties? You know, are we trying to take, do we want to take more property out or are we trying not to impact some of those? As you can see, we've shown a retaining wall along the south side of that section there, not trying to get into that parking lot and that existing businesses along through there. On the north side, we've wrapped around one of those businesses right there. Kind of creates a unique little peninsula out there that might have some unique opportunities in the future. But those are gonna be some of the things we have to, have to work at. We're, we're focusing on a natural channel through here. But if we, if we don't want to, if we wanna work with property owners and minimize in some cases the amount of property that we're gonna have to acquire, the negative impacts that would have on adjacent properties, and, and try and leave that property in the private sector to make some money, um, uh, those are gonna be some of the things we're gonna have to do. That doesn't mean it has to be vertical concrete walls. They can be stepped walls, it could be a portion of vertical and a ramp, it can be textured, you can do a lot of attractive things to that. We have some vertical walls down on Left Hand, on one area, for the same reason, to try and avoid getting into those existing businesses. And they work very well during the flood. And we're gonna get some uh, vegetation, some vines that are gonna grow down over those, but they have texture to them now. And they're not unattractive, and they can fit into that environment. Uh, this is continuing, this is upstream between um, South Prep Parkway and the BNSF Railroad Bridge. Another bridge and another outside agency that we're gonna have to work with on that one. Uh, but here, once again, and you can see along that south bank there, we're looking at trying to do some stepped walls that might come up and then step back a little bit and doing that to try and, and minimize the impact. Otherwise, this is a very tight area through here. As we go, we'll have to look at this very hard as we get into the preliminary design. Um, because otherwise, we could have some pretty significant impacts on having to acquire, I think, more property than we would want to and have more impacts than we would. So this'll be an area that we're working hard on in that regard. Um, continuing upstream, just a little bit further yet, um, this is um... On the north side of this, Boston Avenue, you're seeing the railroad tracks on the right side of the screen, uh, the, the other Mobile Home Park that's up in this area. Um, Boston Avenue on the north side of that is uh, Left Hand Brewery and other businesses. And this is another area where we're gonna have to make some decisions on that. The channel that we've shown right here is a sloped channel. It's not getting into any of those mobile homes, but it does get into the road. And we may need to look at that and say, "How do we avoid that to not do that and have to relocate that road?" So we're gonna be looking real hard at areas through here. But I just, I bring these out to show you some of the challenges that we're gonna be faced with as we look at the design here. It's not gonna be a one-size-fits-all thing. And it can be done in a manner, I believe, that can add some true character uh, and, 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 and come up with a nice, attractive um, river channel that both protects our community and, and is that channel that we, that we want it to be as a focus point of the community. I think one thing we've heard from the community so far, and I know Kim gets those calls on a daily basis, is, "When do we get our greenway back?" Um, "We wanna go ride our bikes, we wanna do those sorts of things." And she's gonna talk some about that, but uh, how we're doing on that. But these are some of the challenges that we'll be faced through that. And if there are any questions, I'd be glad to try and answer those. Like I said, we're in the process of moving forward thanks to the bond election that, that our voters approved. So we have the funding to start working on the design process. And we're trying to get that RFP out, um, like I said, in the next week, week and a half, uh, to get a consultant on board and start this design work right away. And if...
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Just a quick question. I just, I know you don't know the answer, but I'd love to know the top three choices. Just examples, not fixed solutions, but how we would fund that gap. I mean, just for instances.
Right now, we're going after, we're, we're applying for and going after federal dollars, federal funding, and yeah, through CDBG right now. Disaster recovery funds that are going on, and we've been spending a lot of time looking at those. Uh, there is, there are opportunities. I think when we showed you last time, we're talking about applying for something like about fifty or sixty million dollars, hoping to get that twenty to thirty million dollars that would do that.
So that's CDBG, FEMA?
The Corps. Awesome.
So, so, so yeah. I was gonna actually talk about this at the end, but I'll go ahead and jump in now and, and, and swing into it. It is, it is going to be, again, a, a broad range of resources that we're gonna look at, look to, to make up that gap. Um, and, and Dale just gave the primary three. Um, obviously, we feel that the CDBG DR dollars should play a significant part in this project, and we have been in numerous conversations with the state regarding this issue and how they're proposing to, to look at the funding, um, really specifically in the second round of the DR allocation process. Uh, that's where the bulk of the money really comes in. Um, as, as we went through the first round and, and we went through the processes, um, we, um, we obviously had some concerns and some questions. Um, and we have been um, in a constant dialogue with the state on this issue. And what I can say is that they have been listening to us. They recently pushed out um, the amendment to the action plan uh, that they brought out during the first phase. And I wanted to bring council's attention to a couple of, of sections in that. One of the things that we have been talking about is looking at a direct sub-allocation set aside. Um, we've gotta be really careful with the terminology because it, it tends to be a constant source of confusion in these conversations. And that's what we've really been pushing um, for through the process. And we recently had staff attend three public meetings prior to, to this being sent out. Um, the state did include an allocation of funding by county process in, in this and where they looked at basically the impact percentage um, of the county in terms of housing and infrastructure and, and then applied um, uh, the percentage to the amount that they were gonna allocate in those processes. Obviously, we feel like there's still more discussions that need to occur in terms of the numbers. But we feel like that was very positive movement in, in that set aside component that we have been talking about. What it really does is provide certainty. One of the comments that we made to the state during this process is that the problem with the competitive process and the application process is that when you have really large projects, it doesn't provide the certainty that you need um, in order to start pushing those projects forward. And the one thing that we know about this disaster is that the needs that exist in all the communities, um, they're as varied as the terrain that was impacted by this flood. And in some cases, um, as I stated in a public meeting, it's like trying to push a square peg in a round hole to fit into some of these competitive processes. So the state did talk about a process where there would be this set aside component, direct sub-allocation. The other thing that they said that we, that I think is really important in terms of um, listening to us in the conversations is they also put a section in that said, "The funding committed to each county for housing and infrastructure programs is listed below. The state will continue to work with the communities to identify whether the communities have the capacity to manage the housing and infrastructure funds." One of the um, arguments that we've been making as we've been meeting with Molly Urbina, who's the State Recovery Officer, or Stephanie Donner, who's the Deputy Chief of Staff for the Governor, is that we really have the expertise here in Longmont um, to manage these funds. We have been doing it for years, and we have a strong compliance record if, if you look at HUD. And um, we see that being recognized in this document, so I think it's a good step. Obviously, there's still more work to do and more conversations to occur. But what I can say is that we have made more progress. But we're gonna continue to need to be diligent and, and talk about the numbers now according to the processes that are in this document. And um, just before the Sister Cities Reception, I was on the phone with um, the State Recovery Officer talking about this very issue. And um, we've agreed to set up a meeting uh, within the next week um, to talk about numbers. And so, we continue to make progress um, regarding this issue, which ultimately attaches to, "How do we make up the funding gap?"
And then, last question, or second question, and last question. When you're looking at widening the channel, those different slides, my question is, uh, are we, are we gonna be buying the property? Is the property, uh, I guess, is it eminent domain? Is it negotiating? Is it, I mean, I assume that people own that property, as you already alluded to. So the question is, how does it become part of the channel in a way that doesn't become a complete war just through the middle of Longmont with property owners?
There are probably about, as we've looked at it generally, only about ten, which on a project of this size is actually not that bad, different property owners that, that, that we would probably have to work with. And as we do normally, we go to property owners and work on it as far as a negotiated project. I think we've already had discussions with several of these. I think some of these property owners are going to be um... I don't know if the term excited is good, but, but at least pleased with the project because of the fact that it, that it can take the remainder of their property out of the floodplain, which is significant impact to them. So, but, but we will be working as far as negotiations. That is the normal process that we do. But that's not to say that we would not come back to council, depending on how those work, and talk about those things, because we need to acquire that property fairly quickly to keep this project moving in a timely manner.
So, to, to also, there, there are different ways that you wanna approach this. One that we know is by completing this project, we are going to remove property from the flood, floodplain. So one of the things that we wanna do is find a way to partner with property owners because there's obvi- obviously gonna be an economic advantage um, to the property owners and how can they use this as a redevelopment tool. So, one, one is gonna be a partnership discussion and, and how do we approach it. Um, the second is, is a pretty straightforward negotiation process that you go through. Um, one of the things that we need to be cognizant in this process is this is a very important project. But we also don't wanna be held hostage in terms of people setting exorbitant prices on property. And so, the other piece of this is gonna be is, if the price really starts getting too high, then we just need to look at the design and how do we manage it. Um, because too often, I've, I've seen these type of projects get stalled because of those issues. You can design around certain pieces if you have to. It's not that you have to do certain things. So that's another component that you have to look at. And so, there are a number of approaches as an organization that I think we need to utilize in this um, a- as we move forward. I, I really think there's some great opportunities for partnership in redeveloping these areas along the river. And I think um, as, as Nick said, we've heard people are... And again, it's, you don't wanna use the word excited, but to a certain extent, they are excited about the potential with this project.
Counsel, I'm on. Thank you, Mayor Coombs. So Nick, um, we purchased that Tretor Park, it was Royal Mobile Home Park, I think it was, a little over two million dollars earlier this year. How is that being utilized? Is it river widening? Is it, um, can you go into what you're thinking today on that property would be?
Well, if, if you can see right on the left-hand corner, or the left side of the screen right there, you're just, and I didn't bring that particular slide, I'm sorry, but you can see that, that um, we just start to get into it, the mobile homes that are right there on the left side of the screen.
That's it.
I can't reach that hot. But uh, right, use this one. Right over here.
Okay.
Royal Mobile Homes right there is that property. And so, there's going to be, you know, some of that will be widening of the channel. And then I think Brad's gonna talk some about potential options for the rest of that property um, with the, with the work that they've been working on.
And is that two million dollars included in your estimates to date?
Uh, no, it didn't. But we do have included in there estimates for the remainder of the property that we anticipate having to acquire. But I, a good point that Harold brought up was, we have at times looked at, "How do you design around something?" And I mean, you know, that slide is an example of saying, you know, the, the engineers would love to, you know, get the, get the boring engineers and we'd have a straight channel through there because we like to. But we said, um, this particular property owner was not interested in that. And so, we said, "Let's, let's look at how do we work around something like that." And so, designing around something, things, like I said, it's gonna be those options. Do you have a wider channel that's a natural slope? Or do you come in and narrow that up with some vertical options as you look at that? Those are gonna be some of the things that through design and working with those adjacent property owners and their partners and what their plans are for their property, that we'll try and figure out.
So my question is, can we decouple the bike path rebuilding from the actual channel design somewhat? Because that's the biggest question I get asked, is when is my bike path gonna be put back to, to use? So, but I'd like to build the bike path and then have to have heavy construction equipment, you know, drive over it and whip out stuff, so. Can, can you address that for us?
Yes, that's actually the next slide in the presentation.
Okay, great.
So yes, so there is quite a desire to get the bike paths back together in Longmont. So just real quickly, our, our approach is trying to get the trail proper done first. So you are gonna see trails going in, and you might not see trees. The timing depends. We do have our GoCo grants, we have some money for that, but there are some timing issues. So I did wanna reassure everybody, the trail proper is the priority. So we are working extensively on them. Um, a couple of updates, a couple of areas that we are working on temporary trails right now are between um, Prep Parkway and, right here, and all the way to Isaac Walton. So there are contractors out there. This map, they say that we don't, that we were not gonna repair the underpass under Prep Parkway, but we did find a reasonably cost option to go ahead and do that before the new bridge. So that will be there. So, once we have the temporary trail in, um, the path that's, the Saint Rain, Greenway between Main and Sunset Street will be opened all the way up. So right now, we do have the construction at Prep Parkway and just um, east of Boston Avenue. You'll see that the county is working on the underpass under Boston Avenue, and they're out there right now working on that. And then once those segments are done, then we're gonna move over to Isaac Walton. So the area that's between Boston and the railroad tracks behind Left Hand Brewery that's being repaired will have a concrete trail. It will be higher up, close to the property, property line, so it'll be out of the way for work in the river and just, it's not safe down there, so we are trying to keep people up away from it. Over Isaac Walton, it will be a soft surface crusher fine. So we'll make sure that people can pass on all bike forms. And then they'll be able to grow up Isaac Walton to hit Sunset Street. Um, we are still looking at options for over between Sunset and Rogers Grove 'cause that pedestrian bridge is missing. So we're gonna see if maybe we can use one of the existing ones that's a little longer to be, cover the gap before we repair it. This is an area we didn't, you know, right now, depending on how long it takes us to become, the timeline for the river channel, we may not do the full bridge in this area just because then we couldn't use Conservation Trust or FEMA or GoCo funds to replace that bridge. So we are trying to, we'll get the path back, optimize funding sources so that we actually do have the funding to do this. But um, we are looking at it, we're looking at property up, could we do own to the, um, 'cause of the park shop all the way back there? So we are trying to look at a higher path or, I guess, a higher route away from the river to go ahead and get something in for folks. Um, in, in September, you will start seeing construction from, on the Saint Rain Greenway from the confluence of Left Hand Creek all the way out to Dry Creek, which is out towards Sandstone. So that work will be underway October to January. That is the construction timeframe that's allowable because of the Eagle's Nest. So that's part of the reason that hasn't been done. We've been plus doing design. Um, we will be kicking off requests for proposals in September to look at the greenway between Dry Creek and all the way out to Sandstone, the large breach. So, and then the construction of that won't be till next fall, October to January 'cause of the construction timeframe. And so, we are beginning a process this month of working with Boulder County to look at that whole area, 'cause we do jointly own property with them out there. So just looking at what we're gonna be doing with the river out east as well as the greenway path. And then, um, as previously mentioned, Left Hand Greenway, there's intermittent closures while they're working on either the channel and then doing the, the repair of the trail that's just east of Main Street. Um, Boulder County has made the repairs to the Lobo Trail that is west of Ninety-Fifth. But it is still closed 'cause there's still some stuff going on in the area, intermittent closures. But they have repaired that, so um, the public can access that. That's been a, a lot of the calls. Um, also along Left Hand Greenway is Canamota Park. So you can see there's a lot of construction going on out there. We've um, been working with LPC to run um, new electrical lines out there, and there's some trenching. And so, um, next week, we'll be mobilizing with equipment to put in the new irrigation pump station. So that construction will be going on till October. So we have that. Um, we do have a draft conceptual design of the pool that will be going to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board on Monday. And then we'll be bringing that to council. So it is having to do a lot of adjustments in the park, and that's what we alluded to, we might need a little additional funding 'cause we have to relocate the playground, which then relocates the volleyball court to make room for the pool. Um, also, we're sure people can see, as we've been trenching, we've found a lot of additional trash. So we're having to relocate where we're putting some lines and some stormwater piping and... So, so there's lots of challenges in, in that park as well, so. Um, and then the last one I wanted to touch on was Dickens Farm Park. Um, as you recall, we did adopt the master plan in August, right before the flood. Um, we are redoing that, and we do have a draft conceptual plan in that that will also be going to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board on Monday, and then we'll be bringing it to council. in that that will also be going to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board on Monday and then we'll be bringing it to council. And as you look at it, it might differ a little bit from the previous designs that Nick was just showing, but we will be marrying those up. It's a conceptual plan. We're just trying to get it out there so people can see. It's pretty much the same amenities that we had identified before, but because of changes in the area that we're having to relocate some items. So that'll be coming back. So with that, if there are any questions?
Is there a lot of lighting along the St. Greeners? That's totally unlit at night, that's just a dusted on type park, right?
Correct, except for there are lights under the underpasses.
Okay.
In the underpasses. But yes, it is done till, well, it's open an hour before sunrise and an hour after sunset.
I was at Griffin Park, which is a park in Henderson, Nevada. It's a beautiful park and they had these really neat LED lights on the trail. So in the time when it got dusky, the lights would come on and they're printed, they were set up by detectors. So as you walked down the path, it would pre-light. It was just amazing and the quality of light, that 5,000 degree temperature light had just a nice quality to it and just felt safe. It was just like, I think, you know, if you ever get out to Henderson, Nevada, you should check out that park. They did a really good job.
Nick, before we jump off of this, are you about to transition to Brad now? So before we get off of this, I do want to swing back to the C2BG DR conversation. Can you go back to your slide on the funding gap? One of the things that I think we really need, we need to stay focused on as a community is this funding gap. Not only from the infrastructure standpoint, but for all of our needs related to the flood recovery process, the housing issues that we're having to deal with, the economic development issues that we're dealing with. And so I think it's very imperative that as an organization and as a community, we stay very focused on the DR process. And there is a strong possibility that we are going to need council support as we continue moving forward with this conversation. If I didn't say the process up until this point was difficult, it wouldn't be an honest answer. The process has been difficult as we've been moving through these conversations. But as I said earlier, I think we have really reached a point with the state in our comments where we're seeing our comments incorporated into the documents and I think it's a positive sign. Obviously, we still have to watch and we still have to be diligent in representing the interest of our community. To a certain extent, I feel for the state in the process because there's a lot of communities that were damaged. A lot of times, Longmont is not the community that's in the news because we didn't have the destruction. But when you really look at our numbers, when you look at the residents that we had to evacuate, the number of homes that we had to evacuate because we were flooded, it's more than existing lines. And I don't want to make light of what lions had to go through in the process, but our issues were significant. And recovery is critical as we continue moving forward. So again, wanted to say, I think we are making progress. It's been difficult conversations, but I think we're moving in the right direction and we're going to continue to, we're going to need to continue to be very aggressive as we represent the interests of our community. And we very well may have to call each and every one of you as we move into the final stages of this process. But at this point, we think we're moving in a good direction. And I will say that we've had some very good conversations over the last two weeks with the state and look forward to any more.
So is the 12.5% state match, does that roll into the FEMA funds on this thing or where's that?
So the state match is actually within the FEMA allocation. And so that's the recovery process. The way that the DR dollars work is basically HUD, let me call it, my computer just died on me. The way the DR dollars really work in this process is that to date, when you look at round one and round two, there's been about $262,100,000 allocated via HUD. What HUD said in the process is that 80% of those dollars need to be spent in Boulder County, Larimer County and Weld County. And in this action plan, you see some generic breakdown, or not generic, but you see some breakdowns based on needs. And what they explained is that it's actually based on the FEMA data and the projects that have been submitted in the process. And so when you take that 80% of the 262 million, what that really means is that approximately $209 million need to be spent in these three counties. As I look at the percentages that exist in this report, what that would say is roughly about 120 needs to be allocated to Boulder County, approximately 52 to Larimer and 36 million to Weld. I will say that we've sent a number of questions regarding how those percentages and the needs were developed so we can look at the data. That's kind of what HUD has said in the process. Now what we're trying to have conversations about is, again, it's a square peg in a round hole. If you create a program, how does that account for the unique needs of communities? In the sense that we may not have a need that fits this program. And our need may not be covered by another program. How do you account for that? How do you deal with that? And I think that's what we really find in this is where the state's trying to say, we're going to set aside this amount for infrastructure and for housing so you can deal with those unique needs in your community. So I think that's the progress that we've made. So completely different funding source. Sorry, I went on a little bit long, but I wanted to make the distinction.
Thank you.
Councilor Los Angeles?
Thank you, Mayor Coobers. Harold, besides banging our head up against the wall and finally the state now listening, how much money as far as reimbursements have we received?
So in terms of FEMA, we think we're at 1.2 million.
And how much have we put in for reimbursement?
So let me get the numbers because they're, we have 1 million in payments. There's been another payment of about $450,000 that's an EFT that they have indicated is in the process. We haven't seen it. And so we have, and let me work through this backwards. In terms of RFRs that accepted and paid, $1 million. RFRs that are accepted and not paid, another $1 million. RFRs that are submitted and rejected, 376,000. Requests for reimbursement submitted, 2.1 million. Those projects that we've received, Form 1s for is 6.8 million. And then overall, from the FEMA standpoint, where we have approved and obligated, 34 million. But obviously, we haven't engaged in all that work. 29 millions associated with the alternate procedures that we still haven't engaged in. A couple of things have changed in the FEMA process that we're watching closely. I think the pace of reimbursements is not something that's unique to Longmont. It has been a constant focus of conversations from all the communities that are in the process. I know that Boulder County is, they're in the same position that we're in. As you read, they recently received a check of $1 million in the process. We were fortunate, we were already at a million and we had another 400,000 coming. What the state has indicated to us in this process is that what we're going to start doing is funding 50% of the cost based on a cursory review. And so we're waiting to see how that's going to work.
And my only concern is the other 50%, how fast is that going to be after a cursory review? And once everything is done, that other 50%, when is that going to be released?
That's what we're still in conversations on because that's a significant piece on this. What I can say for the one project that we submitted and all of the backup documentation, it was a bank box for one project. And I think that was somewhat surprising to the folks that reviewed this. As you also saw in some of the articles, the state has actually been commenting on how well we've been doing in submitting our documents. What I understand, not everyone's doing that. And again, Molly's doing a great job. What it means to us is we also are in a very strong position when it comes to the audit component of this. And so I think to a certain extent, again, it's one of those questions. We've said, the pace of this is not matching what we need in terms of being able to continue in the recovery process. The result that we see is, is well, we're going to, you know, give you 50% of the obligated funds on the cursory review. Again, I think we need to wait and see and really see how that all comes together and as we're moving through the process. Molly and Dan are on this on a daily basis and we will be reporting back to council as we continue moving forward.
Yes, they were paying, they were looking at things, they promised within a 30-day timeframe and they were going, what, 60?
Right, and I think part of that was that 30-day timeframe, we sent a bank box in.
Right.
And when you look at what you have to review, I think that was very much part of the discussion in terms of releasing the first 50% on the cursory review.
Right, and we're looking at, I'm sorry, I'll go back and it's already gone. We're looking at a funding gap of, what was it, I'm sorry, 20?
20 to 30 million.
And I'm just reading from the Times Call, Boulder County's expecting a $56.1 million flood gap in funding, flood recovery funding. And they're already floating an idea of a tax. So, you know, not that we're going to be fighting for funds with other municipalities, but also with counties, so.
And I think what's important in this, when you look at the numbers that were in the recent update to the allocation plan, when they say 80% has to be spent in the three counties. And you look at the breakdown, the majority of the damage was in Boulder County.
Right.
And so that is where we are working side by side with our colleagues at the county and other communities because we are all facing the same situation in the conversation. And this is the funding gap on the river project. We still have housing and the other components to come into play in the conversation. This is just one piece. And so that is the discussion that we're having.
Well, which is so disheartening when that first tier of funding came through and we got nothing for infrastructure.
Right.
So, and that was just a kick in the gut. We got nothing for infrastructure, so, okay, thank you.
Evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Brad School and I'd like to walk you through the work that we've been doing on the St. Brain Blueprint. Tonight with me this evening and participating in the presentation is Melissa from MIG, who's been project managing from the consultant side. Also Jeff from MIG is here. One of the other distinguished looking fellows in the audience and Adam and Ally from BBC Consulting, who have been doing the economic analysis for this. So tonight, we have a PowerPoint that will take you through what has been going with the St. Brain Blueprint. It started in 2013 officially in July. Although council is probably familiar with the fact that we've been having discussions about the insufficient capacity of the St. Brain floodway since 2011. So this has been non-conditioned and unfortunately, the events conspired with respect to the flood of 2013. But what I would do is take a moment to acknowledge and recognize Dale's group for the advanced planning that they do in infrastructure and utilities for the city. And in the process of the Storm Drainage utility and doing some long-range and master planning for that. Not only was the Left Hand Creek project scoped and constructed, but the insufficiency of the St. Brain corridor for its floodplain was identified as a project. And largely as a result of that proactive identification, the council had some discussions at a couple of retreats and in conjunction with a discussion to fund the blueprint study, talked about what would be appropriate to reconstruct the Greenway in conjunction with rechanalizing the St. Brain River Corridor in order to accommodate the 100-year storm. So the planning process has included what's a, at this point, a reconstructed Greenway would look like. And we have some images that we're going to show you in terms of what we think would be the amenities within the Greenway. We've had a great deal of public input on that. So we're going to talk to you about what we've heard about that. Melissa will show you some of the alternatives that have been discussed. And then we'll show you some of the next steps in the process. At the onset, the study area was defined as that portion of the river corridor within the city that passes through the urbanized area. Much of the St. Brain River Corridor, as it passes through the city, passes through public lands. So upstream of Hoover to the west is in Golden Ponds and going further west is in public land and largely downstream from Martin Street is public property. So those are the sort of the bookends on the east and west side of the river corridor as it passes through the city. And some of that is still in public property. And then on our north-south side, we picked roughly First Avenue and the railroad tracks and Ken Pratt and Nelson Road as area that would be impacted potentially from redevelopment and land use opportunities.
And most of this area was also with a floodplain, so.
Yeah.
They boxed it out in a way that made sense to study.
So some of the milestones in conjunction with this project include the kickoff in July and September. And some council members may remember that at Rhythm on the River in 2013, we were there, out there getting some, in 2012 actually, we were getting some community input, trying to get people's impressions in terms of what were their ideal amenities within River Corridor, what they'd seen in other locations and what are adjacent land use redevelopment opportunities. So in July to September, there was a public outreach to get some of that information in terms of what were preferences. Subsequent to that and after September of 2013, we were in a little bit of a reloading process, trying to assess in terms of what happened in the floodway and whether or not people's priorities had changed with respect to what were the preferences for redevelopment. It included stakeholder interviews, Intercept events at Rhythm on the River and Festival on Main. Some design alternatives have been developed in the early part of this year and Melissa will show you some of those. We had a design workshop, community open house and economic analysis had been prepared. And going forward, we'll be taking public input, some of the great ideas on lighting from the mayor. And we'll be meeting with Art in Public Places tomorrow about opportunities for art in the Greenway. So we continue to refine the design towards a preferred alternative and a plan draft will be generated. We'll do some more community outreach, check in with Parks and Rec Advisory Board, P&amp;Z. And plan adoption, what we'd like to do is see that in maybe September, October timeframe so we can use the St. Brain Master Plan, Watershed Master Plan study to help inform the St. Brain Blueprint. And at the same time, we hope the St. Brain Blueprint will inform the civil engineering design project as it goes forward that Nick and Dale talked about. Here's a slide that takes a look at some of the different types of input that we've had. The graphics on the top is the famous dot voting board that I hope you participated in. And that's where people put their dots next to what they thought were the visual images that were most appropriate. The First and Main Plan is featured in the graphic in the bottom as well as one of the Anderson Design Panels that's shown on the lower left, which was part of the floodplain analysis that was done previously. Here's a shot from the design charrette in March in which some of the council members attended. And from that and from the community input, we were able to take some of the previous community input, validate it and also get feedback on some of the resiliency principles in the plan and start developing the alternatives. We had another open house in April, which was part of the Core Connections of the South Main improvements. And there's some principles that are sort of guiding the concept of the Greenway Corridor. Is this where you're going to start, Melissa?
So as Brad version, we took the information that we've heard from all the different open houses and stakeholder interviews and the Intercept events and put them all kind of condensed into some key principles that we wanted to remember when we develop the alternatives. Some of those, and some of these actually are also coming out of the St. Brain Greenway Master Plan, the one from 2001. The Wildlife Management Plan, First and Main, a bunch of different plans we've pulled from there as well. plans we've pulled from there as well, so these concepts, I'm sure, um, make, are pretty sensible, respecting the multiple functions of the Greenway, balance the natural and urban aspects, and, um, you can read down the list, I won't read it to you, but anyway, this is what, so the alternatives were based on for the blueprint, and also are the main concepts that are, um, for the upcoming civil work, and we're trying to balance the need to accommodate the floodway or the, uh, flood flows, and also respect the natural aspects and, um, recreation aspects of the corridor. So we took those, um, principles and started building some alternative scenarios, um, we also ta- took some different elements that people have told us about, and we tried to put them in different areas and get some feedback of this is a good spot, or this is a good spot. I should say, one of the, um, uh, key things that we were also thinking about is that with that balancing of the, um, natural function along with the recreation function along with the floodway function, we wanted to make sure that we still, um, got forward the, um, St. Brain Greenway Master Plan's idea of having key nodes of, um, recreation intensities, and not just having a, a Greenway that's just focusing on recreation and not carrying those other balances, so some of these elements are going to be very similar to what you saw in those Greenway Master Plans, because we wanted to bring that up through this plan, but then we've chosen select areas to add more amenities, um, and I probably will not hit every detail, I'll try to make sure I get most of the concepts to you, but for the, um, time and the amount of details that are in this, um, I'll, um, be happy to go back if you wanted more information on the details, but anyway, over in the, um, Rogers Grove area, we put some different ideas out, and some of these are not actually going to make it to the preferred plan, we've, we've talked to the, um, staff members, we have, we had a TAC, which is a technical advisory board, or committee, I should say, for the C, that helped us through a way to double-check things, um, with all the other plans that are going on, and, and, um, also, um, some feedback at the open house, too, so we just are trying different tests of, you know, the things that we could do in Rogers Grove, additional paths, or, um, um, using this area as an interpretive, um, kind of a educational experience kind of thing, we could use different areas to talk about the natural aspects, or we could use different areas to talk about the floods, or some history, that kind of idea, and over on the, um, side here were some of the, um, influences that we had for this, um, some of the things that have been pulled out is some of the extent of this, um, trail system over here, so that we respect the, um, environmental aspects, but we also did want to have some kind of concept to say that there's some really valuable trees over there that we may want to make sure that we, um, consider when we do the gr- grading in the future, um, and this, this is just basically, this area here is basically trying to show what the extent of the grading is, it's not exact to the, um, CH2M Hill grading, but it was just trying to show it's a wider channel, and we didn't want to really get into properties, so we tried to respect that as well, but it's something that'll have to be looked at again when, once we get closer to a, uh, a particular design for the Greenway. We also looked closer at Isaac Walton Pond, some of the different concepts we had is, um, how far in should we, uh, use on the pond, um, should we come back here and make a wider area that, um, isn't such a, a causeway as it used to be, we also wanted to note, um, different possibilities for public, um, public-provided amenities that complement the, um, Greenway, but weren't actually something that we built, but it would be something that we encourage redevelopment to, um, include in their design, or it might be a public-private thing where we encourage it, we also wanted to note on the south side, uh, somewhat limited access, so that we would respect that, um, wildlife corridor that goes through that area, um, also adding a couple other trail links for future development. Um, our totals for that were, um, some ideas to do, uh, upstairs index, for boardwalks, um, and, and different, different ways that we could do that, um, and again, we moved down the creek, and we have some different ideas here as well, different locations for a more public pla- or more, um, landscape plaza, we thought that the area that this would be most appropriate is, is between the Pratt Parkway and the Main Street Bridge, because it is an urban area, this, this area is in the, um, Greenway Plan as somewhere that you could have two sections of trail, um, since it is an urban, more intense area and the, um, wildlife, um, habitat is not as, not as a high quality, so, um, we went ahead and did some more intense uses down here, um, different ideas of paths, um, a beach, um, some things that we tested out with the public, and they came back and told us that they liked, and again, we talked to the Technical Advisory Committee, and they gave us some feedback, too, what's, um, that, and his needs in the rec plan and the Parks and Trails Plan, what's in Dickens Park already that we don't need to include here. Um, another aspect of the, um, blueprint is, um, doing some design for materials all along the corridor, so we have a more uniform corridor, I, I like our unique signature pieces that, you, kind of gives you the idea that you're in the, the St. Brain Greenway Corridor, so we've been working on the Main Street Bridge design, which is tending to be a complementary of the, um, Highway one nineteen bridge materials, and bring, not a copy of it, but some elements into this, and so we went through some different ideas, um, we have a different couple of escapes, or, um, concepts here, um, that we're still working with because of the delay with the Main Street Bridge, we're, we're waiting on refining those, um, but the intent is to, through this blueprint, to not only just do a recreation core, but also bring it out, how it, how it meets out to the redevelopment to the sides, and how the bridge skates tie in, how the, um, maybe some of the street skates will tie in, so I was trying to get this going, so that I don't keep hearing about, but as I said, um, we're also looking at the areas that are being, um, removed from the floodplain, we think there'll be, um, uh, we're looking at an economic component of this project, and it's looking at what we can expect for the property values for Isaac and the area due to the removal of floodplain, but also due to the, um, increase of the, um, value of being near such a, um, signature amenity, and then also about trying to play with some land uses, so in this part, we, um, started looking at what people, what we heard people would want to see in the area, so we compared different ideas, and with this, as well as with the last couple, um, scenarios, we took pieces of each of them and put them together, and we're working toward a preferred alternative with those, the ideas that would, um, convey the vision. We also respected the, um, First and Main Plan and other, um, area plans that were in the areas, like the Dickens Park and Park. Um, when we talked about the stairs, we brought out different concepts for people to get a better idea of what we're talking about, and not have, um, give them something to look at, so, so they know what we're talking about, um, this is also adaptive reuse of buildings that we thought would be appropriate in some areas down there. Connectivity concepts, but again, bringing the, um, river corridor into the areas around, and how that, how everything, um, is united, and, um, and this, of course, is bringing a lot of plans together, including the, uh, Boston Avenue extension that goes through the Dickens Park, that's in the First and Main Plan, and then the South, um, Urban Renewal Plan. And again, our model that, um, we use for this, um, and we first intended back in July to use this as something that we could, um, do better at conveying the benefits to the community of, of doing such a project, but it's kind of showed itself, so we did, we are doing it anyway, because we think it will be valuable for this project, but, um, um, and, um, that will be part of the plan. So again, we're taking the preferred alternative, doing a blend of the alternatives, we're working on that right now, we're doing some modifications to Dickens Park area, or area to get it to, um, be complementary to the new design, we're also working on, um, alternatives for the redevelopment areas, and we've been working with staff about how to logistically do that, um, and here are some of the redevelopment concepts that we've been coming up with that we wanted to show people, some ideas that could happen here, this is actually looking on the Main Street Bridge up to the First and Main area that might, um, and this is a long time in the future, so we don't want to threaten any businesses along here, but what could happen here, um, this is the area that might have a wall, but, you know, this is still a potential alternative, this is one of the sketch designs in the back, but we also have some ideas about how the walls could be treated, how, um, private development can, um, interact with the Greenway, uh, maybe increasing pedestrian access down to the creek corridor, a little, uh, testing of the heights of intensity of buildings and uses, and then also looking how, um, buildings, uh, could be combined with existing buildings to create a unique area, and not forcing out some of the local businesses, like the brewery that we, um, also value, um, maybe coming in with some new amenities along the creek, and street skates were another aspect that we're looking at, have changed, and these will be a little more defined in the preferred alternative, another street skate out past and looking west, how it might develop over time, um, retaining some aspects and, um, putting some new in with the old. So the next steps that we're going to do, like Brad said, was to continue with the refinement of alternatives, we'll work with the TAC, and then also talk to the PRAB and to the, um, uh, Planning and Zoning Board, um, uh, we're working on the plan draft right now, uh, there'll probably be some other community outreaches, we've been kind of moving back and forth with what's been going on with other efforts in the community, and then again, what Brad said, um, hopefully by the, um, next few months, a plan review and adoption. And that is all I have for you.
All right, well, thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Thank you, Dennis Coons, Mayor, um, a couple of things, um, we've had several classes from CU Denver, their Landscape Architecture Class come and, you know, do this as a class project, look at various, um, alternatives, and I'm hoping that we could perhaps tap into them again, and, because they had some additional ideas that looked very similar to this, and some other concepts that they introduced to council a couple of years ago, so we're looking at those other things, if we can, you know, kind of reach back and, and gather some of the work they did, it might, they did great sketch-ups of various things and mapping, and so I think that, um, it would be nice to have, you know, that vibrancy of, of students coming up with some other things. The other thing is, um, we are going to be looking at redoing the comp plan, and so I wouldn't want to set any of these, um, alternatives in stone, when we know we're going to have this big public input about, um, the comprehensive plan and what our, the community vision for several decades, you know, decade or so, um, in the future would be, and I think there'll be a lot of, um, great conversations generated about this area of town, um, and the other thing is, I just would like to recall, um, some conversations we had about environmental mitigation in some of these areas, I know that, um, the site of Colorado Materials we knew had been an old landfill of sorts, and we're not quite sure what's five or so feet below the surface, and, uh, um, I have some concerns when we, um, are looking maybe at some, um, housing and employment to consider some environmental effects of, of that long use of mixed industrial, and then that landfill use that we had before, too.
Okay, I don't see any other questions or comments, uh, thank you so much for your presentation, you got more?
I don't, no, but I did want to, um, thank all the staff that's been working on this, you know, Kim, and Nick, and Ken, and Brad, and, and folks, um, and of course, Harold over here, um, is our spreadsheet guy, so it's been a huge effort, it's going to be a huge effort going forward, you're going to be, you're going to be sick of us talking to you about this project, I think, as we go over time, but, um, honestly, it is going to take a huge amount of council input and leadership on getting this thing through, and we really appreciate what you've done thus far, and hopefully what we have going forward.
Thank you.
And I was actually going to jump in, and, and Dale stole my thunder, but this really has been a great staff initiative, the other day, just, what I wanted to do is also tell council associated with this, um, I received a letter from FEMA, um, and Ronald Lampum, who was the Deputy Public Assistance Coordinator that worked here, and, and I'm just going to paraphrase some, some aspects of the letter, but, um, he wanted to express his appreciation for all the assistance and cooperation, um, that the FEMA team received from the City of Longmont staff, um, and he, he said, um, "Your staff has performed exceptionally in working with this under the difficult conditions, um, the residents of your, um, city should, um, should be proud, because the city has, uh, exceptional staff of dedicated workers," um, he named a few, Danny Man, Molly Costalecki, Nick Wilfrum, Susan Wolak, and then he said many more, um, but the piece that really stuck out in the letters, he said, "I've worked on more than fifty federally declared disasters in his career with FEMA, um, and I feel comfortable putting, um, the Longmont staff in with the best of the best sub-grantees, uh, in the process," and, and so I wanted to just let you know, that was the feedback that we received from FEMA, and it really, um, it really does indicate the work that's been done, and continues to be done as we move forward.
Councilmember Bagley, thank you, I just wanted, we seem a little subdued and quiet tonight, but when I voted for, when we voted for, I think, but this is the kind of those pictures, and the work you're doing on the River Corridor, this is exactly what I imagined, and so, uh, as nobody made comments, I just thought I'd chime in and just say, "That, I for one, that's exactly what I was expec-" actually, I wasn't expecting it to be that good, so, well done, keep going in that direction, and you're doing awesome, and because somebody needs to provide the vision and the plan, and for the first time, I actually tonight, so, oh, I see how this is going to work, and so I, I was lacking that piece up until tonight, and several times, we've had conversations, either as council member as well as council of staff, like, "So what's going on with the River Corridor, wh- what's going to happen, how's that work with the flood, flood, uh, flood efforts?" So it was a good way to, thank you, it, I mean, work's progressing, thumbs up, uh, I was quiet, and I'm assuming everybody else was, because it's like, huh, it's in good hands, keep going, so, thank you.
Councilmember Prisensin.
Yes, thank you, um, Mayor Portman Bagley, I think we all feel, you know, whether we look like it or not, we all feel really excited about this, and it's a huge amount of work that you've guy, you guys have done, um, and I, I think if this, when you get a little bit further along, this would be great to post on the website, the city's website, because this would, you know, everybody in town would be really excited to see what's going on, too, but I know you have to work through different, the different alternatives and stuff, but wonderful work, thank you.
Why isn't it done yet?
We wanted second with you before we first did. I'm being really truthful.
Well, I'm just, I'm also really proud of the job that our whole staff has been doing on this, and I get a lot of questions from the citizens about, you know, when the bike path's going to be done, and what's it going to look like, and, uh, what are we doing to protect our city in the future, so I think we answered a lot of that tonight, so hopefully people are paying attention that, uh, this city is moving in a positive direction, so, thank you. Anybody else? All right, um, so I guess city manager, any comments? Okay.
We don't care, Bonnie.
Pardon? I guess I'm going to preempt you and see the...
I didn't realize we were at council comments.
Okay, so this is council comments, so go ahead.
That's my business of the week, I, it would, I would be remiss if I didn't have a business of the week, uh, this week, it's Apricot Lane, it's a new dress shop in town at one eighty Ken Pratt Boulevard down in Harvest Junction, I have it on good authority, they have really cute stuff down there, so, um, when people say, "Oh, there's no place to shop in Longmont," well, yeah, there is, there's Apricot Lane.
QR. Okay, city manager, your comments.
And remember Bonnie's Beer Garden would be great along the river.
Mayor Council, one of the things that was talked about today was obviously the, um, the public discussion i- in terms of the, um, um, the questions whether or not to appeal the ruling, um, on, that the district judge made, um, as, um, City Attorney May and I had looked at the schedule, obviously, the twelfth was quick, and, and it turned around based on getting that information in, uh, the nineteenth is a study session, so we were looking at the next regular session, which is the twenty-sixth, unless council wants to change a study session to a regular session, but we were planning on putting that on the twenty-sixth of, of August.
I'm fine with doing it the twenty-sixth, is anybody compliant with the twenty-sixth? Yeah, stay with the twenty-sixth, that still gives you plenty of time to file the PO and whatnot, right?
We're faking Fendicatus.
Councilmember Lewis, I, I guess I, you wanted to speak, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, um, I just want to, um, thank Jim Wall, who provided a vehicle for city council to ride on, um, for the county fair parade, and thanks to council members that were there, and we missed you that weren't, um, and I'm hoping that we can do something fun for the holiday parade, perhaps even in Victorian costume, that's, Bonnie and I are cooking something up, and, um, I'd also like to acknowledge, um, uh, for... And I'd also like to acknowledge former council member Katie Witt is going to be leaving Longmont. I believe it's tomorrow is the big move date, and as I served with her for quite a number of years, I just want to wish her well and her family well, and not to forget us here in Longmont, and her journeys forward in the future, and I wish her luck in future endeavors, as well as her family, and, you know, hope she comes back and visits us. So farewell, Katie Witt.
City Attorney, any comments?
Mayor, I did hear you use the term preempt, and I get a little twitchy when you use words like that, but did warn on my due, I have my performance evaluation next week, I did send, I think my office sent you an email about an online survey, we'll send out a reminder tomorrow, if council could look towards completing that by the end of the week, that would be helpful. And we'll see you next week.
All right. This meeting is now adjourned.